Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting for Monday, April 6th, 2020. We'll begin with a call to order. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And we'll start first with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. The agenda is attendance and I believe that we have all seven councilors in attendance this evening. And I should say to everyone watching at home, this is actually the first time that our Town Council is meeting via Zoom. I know a lot of people have come to know the technology very, very quickly over the last few weeks. And so this is really an unprecedented meeting for us and that's all seven councilors are participating via Zoom. This also allows members of the public to be able to participate. And with that, I'll turn it over to our next item on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that has signed in for participation this evening to participate live?
Nobody live, no, but we did get a, we did get an email from a Kathy Giuliano.
Yes, and I have that here.
Yeah.
So this was sent from Ms. Kathy Giuliano, 14 Richards Road in Reading. And she wrote, she sent this today and it says, "Has the town of Wakefield considered closing or restricting parking and gathering around the lake? Beaches and parking areas are closed across New England, but Lake Wana Powell continues to be a crowded area where social distancing is not possible. Honeydew parking lot was full today of congregants and with so many people walking without masks, et cetera, keeping the lake accessible is most certainly contributing to the spread. The governor has stated many times that we, that we must all do our part to minimize the spread, which includes not going out unless it is absolutely necessary." So that was a comment from Ms. Giuliano from Reading. Madam Clerk, do we have any other comments or participation this evening?
No Chairman, no one else.
Right, great, thank you. So the next item on the agenda then will relate to the, the town elections. As many of you watching at home may know, the elections are actually scheduled to begin, scheduled to take place three weeks from tomorrow on Tuesday, the 28th. In light of the COVID-19 pandemic, it's quite apparent that in fact, the elections will need to be postponed, although technically, we haven't done that as of yet. So we've convened this meeting this evening to allow everyone the opportunity to be able to be heard on that issue and with the intention of setting a new date for the elections to take place. With that, I'll turn it first over to Mr. Mayo, our Town Administrator, and then we also have our Town Clerk, Betsy Sheeran on the line, and our Town Council, Mr. Tom Mullen as well. But I'll turn it first over to you, Mr. Mayo, for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On March 23rd, the Governor of Massachusetts, Governor Baker, did sign legislation. It was Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, which allowed, due to the coronavirus state of emergency, allows the Select Board, in our case Town Council, the authority to move municipal elections. And previously, you had to get a judge's approval to do this, but this allows the Town Council under their own vote to move it with some caveats. The election could be moved between when the date was to June, through June 30th. There was consultation with the local election official, which would be our Town Clerk, and the Chief Operating Officer, which I guess would be the Town Administrator. So to that end, Town Council, the Town Clerk and I met to discuss this, met via, not via Zoom, but via a conference call, to discuss when we felt would be a prudent date to move the election, keeping in mind that we had to make sure the schools were satisfied, should be a date when school was not in session. And we will make sure certainly when we do have this election that there will be full consultation. There will be full consultation with the health agent to make sure that there is, you know, we take any protocols or necessary measures in the event that the coronavirus is still with us at that time. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to the Town Clerk if that's okay, and she can add her two cents to this meeting. And then perhaps the Council would like to vote. So Betsy, your floor is yours. Hello? Betsy? Hello, hello? I don't know.
Is she there? No.
I don't know what happened to her. Let me, well, let me call her back. I don't know what happened to her. And in any event, Betsy did send in a, an email that after conferring with us, he wanted to move the election to the 23rd of June, which is Yeah, she's calling in. She's calling in. Betsy? Try again. She wanted to move it to the 23rd. She thought that was the prudent date to do it. And it's caught my calls going through now. I don't know what happened. I swear I didn't cut her off. I'll pay for this, by the way.
I got you. Oh, you bet your life you will.
All right, Betsy, the floor is yours.
Okay, fine, thank you. Before I proceed and everything is all set to go, conversation with Steve as well as speaking with Councilor Tom Mullen, the date of Tuesday, June 23rd is being presented to you tonight. Once I get the okay, I can set everything in motion. I can't do a thing until that vote passes hopefully tonight. And then I'll be on my way. There are several issues that I have to address and I will, I speak with Steve every day and for once, we will have early voting for our town election, which we normally do not. There will also be absentee ballots. Naturally, they're always available. And I will be in contact with Steve every day and I'm sure he will keep you apprised of what's going on. What else do you want to know?
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'll say Steve, I appreciate that you had a conference call, but those conference calls are so two weeks ago now.
I know. I know. Come a long way. What can I tell you?
With that, do we have any comment from Mr. Mullen relative to this?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I am very much a two weeks ago kind of guy. But, but I do plan on getting Zoom pretty soon. Right now, I'd have to content myself with calling in. I have nothing to add to what Betsy said. I did prepare earlier and email to Steve a very simple form of motion, which I believe suffices under Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mullen. And with that, I'll open up to any comments or questions that any members of this body may have relative to what is being suggested. If anyone has a comment or question, if you could just raise your hand and we can unmute you that way. Go ahead, Counselor Butt.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. I just, I wanted to thank Steve and Tom and Betsy for working on that. It's really great that the Governor and the Legislature are letting us postpone it. I think it's the right thing to do as, until we flatten the curve some more and figure out ways of people not having to go out in public in mask groups. I also am going to abstain from taking this vote as I'm on the ballot, the upcoming ballot. So I don't, I just think I should abstain and not take this vote. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for that, Counselor Butt. Any other comments or questions?
Ed?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I just wanted to let people know because I've had this come up. I emailed already to the people that are on the ballot, praising them of the new date. But also, I wanted understood that everyone will stay in place. We're more or less in limbo. Chairs will remain there unless they choose to step down. And everyone will stay in place until the election. And the ballot will be dated, according to this law, the April 28th. So I don't want anyone to think that, you know, that's in this print or anything.
Thank you. And I do think one of the important takeaways from this is, as you had mentioned, the legislation provides for people to be able to vote by mail, not just absentee, but vote early by mail because of the circumstances where we find ourselves in currently.
Right. And they'll apply for them online. They, you know, we have to have a signature. So they'll apply online. And if someone's disabled, unable to apply online, a relative can do it for them. But I'll get all of that out and I have all ways of notifying the public. And again, I'm going to work with Steve. I just need the go-ahead tonight on the date so I can put things in motion, set things in motion first thing in the morning.
Understood. Thank you. I see the Counselor Chines has his hand up. Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, thank you, Madam Clerk and everyone for sort of the work done on the election. I know it's a lot to digest with everything else going on. Ms. Sheeran, I was wondering if you could just, you know, with the new election date of June 23rd, sort of remind us of some of the other deadlines in terms of when people will need to be registered, when absentee ballots
Yes, the last date to register to vote is usually 20 days before. But in this instance, it's going to be 10 days before. 10 days before falls on a Saturday. Therefore, it will be Friday, June 12th. All of this will be put out there for people. Timing is everything. And if all of that information goes out now, people have many, many more important things to worry about right now. Their personal health, their jobs, et cetera. So we'll get that all out and we'll be open instead of closing at 12:30, if in fact, the building is open and I hope it will be, we'll be open until 8 o'clock that night. People can also vote up until early and absentee up until noon of the day before the election. But all of that will be out there. And the last date of registered vote will be Friday, June 12th, at 8 o'clock PM.
Great, thank you, Ms. Sheeran. And just a second question for, for this body on the Town Council, and forgive me, this is sort of the new person question that I'm going to ask. But to what extent does that have, what impact does changing the election date have on our own internal reorganization? I'm just not quite sure how that process works. I don't know, Mr. Mullen or Mr. Mayo, if you have any
I think that the legislature, legislation says that everyone, everyone remains in office. But that's it. But that's it. Whatever the boards or committees or commissions decides to do, that's on their own.
Right.
So Our term is extended. Your, your office, you do not lose your seat because the election was postponed. That's the only
Yeah, so I understand that. Then I guess the question, and maybe this is then something sort of as a, as a body, the Town Council needs to decide is, you know, do we, you know, do we do our reorganization meeting in July after the election, or do we do it in May when we typically would have? And again, being new, I'm not
I read this and that's up to the Council. I don't see anything in legislation that that talks to that.
I thought something went out. I can barely hear John. I'm not sure if I answered this question or not.
But our board is unique. Sorry.
So is the Councilor. You all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Santos?
I think unless the legislature says otherwise, I think we could reorganize because if we decided to, because our board is staying the same. If we had, if we had the possibility of another person taking the spot of someone who's presently on the board, I can understand hesitating reorganizing. We don't have that situation. So, and you know, the Charter doesn't say anything about this. Typically, reorganization is up to the board. So unless the legislature says otherwise, it's a discussion we can certainly have to reorg before July.
Is that Mr. Mullen that's highlighted there?
Hi, Tom Mullen here. Yeah, reorganization is entirely a function of the board's wishes and traditions. You can reorganize at every meeting if you want. Not that I'm trying to arrange an insurrection against the Chair.
That's, that's fine. Counselor Dinoco?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to agree with Ian as far as it is, and the Council right now. It is a policy of the councilors that we organize in May. And that can be changed because it's one of our own policies. I think Mr. Mayo has said that right along now for at least the last 10 years that I've been a counselor, that what we set as policy can be changed at the will of the Council at any given time. So I do agree with Ian in what she stated. So if that's the will of the board, I would follow suit and go with that way of thinking.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santos, do you have something further?
No, I lowered my hand. Sorry. I mistakenly raised it.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none then, then there is a motion that I will entertain. Mr. Mayo, do you have a copy of that motion?
I do. I do. Would you like me to read it, Mr. Chair?
Would you mind reading aloud?
The motion is that move pursuant to Section 1 of Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, and because of the Governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the town election scheduled for April 28th, 2020 be postponed to Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020.
Thank you. So move by Counselor Dinoco, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Santos. All right. All of the votes that we take while we're using this technology will be roll call votes. So I'll begin, Vice Chair Santos.
I.
Counselor Dinoco?
I.
Counselor Chines?
I.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
I.
Counselor May? Lost Counselor May?
How about that?
Yep, there he is.
Okay, yes.
All right. And Counselor Butt?
I'm abstaining from this vote.
All right. And Chairman Zombrowski abstaining as well, as Counselor Butt and I are both in this election cycle. So with that, a count of vote of five to zero for the postponement and rescheduling of the town election to Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, with the same options as presented in the legislation that was signed by the Governor back on June, back on March 23rd. Great. All right. Thank you all for that. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for your participation.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be safe, be well, be healthy.
Good night, Betsy.
You too, Betsy.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda for this evening is COVID-19 updates. And I've been in communication with Mr. Mayo, I'd say probably multiple times a day, almost every day in the last few weeks. A few things that I just wanted to highlight for the community, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Mayo to give some more details. We are currently in Wakefield, as of today, at 60 positive cases for COVID-19. It's, that's significant certainly in a, in a community of 25,000. And certainly, community spread is something that we're all grappling with currently. One of the most important things, one of the best means of prevention or mitigation, as the case may be, remains social distancing. And I know that the town has been pushing out a lot of information about that. You've been hearing about it in the news, certainly since all of this transpired several weeks ago. And we cannot stress enough the importance of social distancing. It is the most important thing that each and every person can do to play their part in helping to stop the spread of COVID-19. And there are just a number of instances where it seems that people are still not heeding that advice. And one of the most problematic of them continues to be walking the lake. I spoke with Mr. Conway, our DPW Director today, and asked him, and you know, we're looking at sidewalks that at best are probably five feet wide, in many cases are probably closer to four when you have telephone poles and the like. It's not possible to socially distance six feet when you have that kind of narrow passageway. And whether you're walking one direction or two, it just, you can't, you can't make it work. And so for your own health and safety and the health and safety of your neighbors, you know, we implore you to please, please, please rethink how you approach, you know, any kind of outside engagement you have. Take, this whole idea of, of taking a break from the lake right now is really important. There are in total 88 miles of roadway here in Wakefield. Most of them are quiet residential streets. And so consider a challenge of seeing how many miles you can walk, maybe explore on foot another neighborhood. Keep your distance always. But right now, the lake is, is one of the worst places that you can be walking around. There are just too many people. There are too many people congregating around the lake. And I understand it, especially as the weather's nice. It's such, it's ingrained in our DNA here. But we have to change our behaviors and our patterns. Again, we're at 60 positive cases currently. And as we've all been hearing, the next two weeks are going to be increasingly dire and concerning for us. So please heed the advice of our town. Please pursue other ways if you want to get outside. You know, there's so many other opportunities to do that. The lake is not where you want to be. And we've pushed it out on social media, in email. We've really tried to get it out there. Please, please think about other ways. And I know Mr. Mayo will talk a little bit more about that going forward. Couple of the points I wanted to make sure the community was aware of. There's a lot of proactive action that you can take to help your, your neighbors and friends. One of them is the food pantry. The food pantry remains open. You can continue to make contributions to the food pantry. For every $1 contribution, that nets out $5 worth of food. The food pantry has curbside pickup. So when, if you do make use of the food pantry, which again is in the basement of the Americow, please just pull up and wait for someone to come out and then assist you. And they can take your order and then bring it back out. Food pantry continues to have their hours on Tuesdays and then Thursday evenings. Please take advantage of that opportunity if you need that assistance. We also have the Wakefield Emergency Fund, which is another opportunity for those in need. If you're looking to either contribute to support your, your neighbors, or if you're in need of some financial assistance during these challenging times, the Emergency Fund is administered through the Town Administrator's Office. If you're looking to make a donation to it, you can certainly send it a check right to Town Hall, One Lafayette Street, just write in the memo Emergency Fund, able to town of Wakefield in any amount. If you're in need of assistance, you can find the portal through our website. You can also reach out to Town Administrator Mayo directly on that email. Or you can call the Town Administrator's Office and that information can, can be provided to you. We want to help those who are in need. Also, our business community is obviously being incredibly impacted by this. And the Wake, the Wakefield, Linfield Chamber of Commerce has done this, a great job in trying to help out business and guide them through the process. Really, two ways of doing that. One is through the SBA, the Small Business Administration. On our Town's website, wakefield.mass.us, we have a portal in the bottom left corner, at the bottom of the page, the COVID-19 portal. You can go there and get a lot of different information. We also have a separate business resource section on our website that links to the state's page for small businesses. There are a lot of different loans right now through the, through the SBA, including payment, payroll protection, other disaster loans, and a lot of other financial economic relief that can be turned around very quickly for, for people within our community that may need it. If you own a small business here in town, or you're a small business owner living in Wakefield but owning a business elsewhere. So please take advantage of those resources as well. Sba.gov is another portal for that. And finally, the Boys and Girls Club of Stonemakers in Wakefield, their revenues are down about 25% as a result of their, their inability to be able to make use of their, especially their stone spaces they used to. That's huge for our community. They're accepting donations. You can donate right on their website and, and really make, make an impact. They are continuing to support, get the kids in our community with lunches and the like. And it's, it's really important that, that we keep our, our community fed, especially those in most need of it. And finally, the, the community program set up through the, the Chamber of Commerce for Supporting Business, the Cards for our Community. It's a great program that, that basically allows you to make a donation either through a GoFundMe page, through the two drive-up tellers that are available at the Savings Bank, but at Lakeside Office, and also in Greenwood. And you can make a donation in any amount. Then the, the chamber is purchasing gift cards to other grocery stores or local business establishments, and then giving them to those most in need. They're being distributed by both the food pantry and by the school department. So it's a real opportunity if you're looking for ways to, to help out the, those in need. But it also helps other businesses at the same time. So it's a real win-win. It's a really, really great program that we have in place. And again, more information is on, is online relative to that. You can go to the Chamber's website and their Facebook page for details. And before I turn it over to Mr. Mayo, I'll just say that, again, I've spoken to Mr. Mayo every day, just about, using multiple times a day. He and our team have done an incredible, incredible job of handling the situation. I feel like we've, we've often been, been one step, if not two steps ahead of what a lot of other communities So I thank Mr. Mayo, you know, for all of your commitment. I want to recognize also our Health Director Ruth Clay, our Emergency Management Director, Thomas Walsh, our Chief Sullivan, as well as Chief Scory, and our Communications Manager, Jen McDonald. They've all done a phenomenal job in that information. And it's, it's a lot of work that's been done very well. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank all of the Town employees and all the citizens who are doing their best every day to mitigate the effects of the coronavirus. And this is a landscape that keeps changing with every hour, but I really believe that together, we, we've answered the challenge as best we could. And answering challenges like this are not by accident. And I'm very appreciative of the hard work preparing for emergencies in general, that our emergency team practices. I mean, even this January, we attended an unrelated tabletop emergency exercise. Certainly, we did not believe that we would have a duration of this magnitude. But again, we do learn and we go, we learn how to move forward. So a huge shout-out to our police fire, DPW, our health team, and all the employees and to the Board and Council members, because your support really means a lot. Also, I want to highlight a couple of things that the Chairman said. The citizens of Wakefield have really been great about stepping up. And whether you donated to the food pantry, our cards for the community, which I think has just about reached its $15,000 goal today. It was a great program by John Swminsky and the Chamber. The Emergency Fund, we've received over $16,000 in donations. And we are very close to putting that online piece together. But in the, in the interim, you can please send the check to Town Hall, One Lafayette and care of me. In fact, I spoke to a gentleman today that was sending in the check. And I think we did, and again, I am very, very proud of the actions of not only our Town Council, but the Board of Health in particular. They have worked really well. And I think we did. We tried to do a lot of things. We closed early on March 12th, the library's senior center, civic center, schools. And the schools have done a great job maintaining services of distance learning and also providing rides, excuse me, providing meals, our grab-and-go meals. And Senior Center continues to help some of our seniors with rides and getting to appointments and wherever else they need to go. In fact, I think our school department is one of the few places in districts in the state that are actually practicing district, district, distance learning from day one. And I heard, I heard that today from the, from the Commissioner's Office. We continue to work with our veterans. The food pantry remains open. Sadly, we closed the fields and the playgrounds. That was not an easy decision. In fact, our DPW guys are going back out and rewrapping them because there's wind and there's rain. We limited public safety building lobby to emergencies only. We're doing virtual inspections. And as importantly, the Town Council did declare a state of emergency effective of March 16th. That helped us with flexibility in response, and I believe will position us better for state and federal reimbursement. The Town Council supported the Board of Health decision to close the personal care businesses. And we closed Town Hall to the public. We put our staff on split shifts and are working remotely. And most are working remotely now, and a great job by IT Department. But we still have the town's business to do, and we've been doing it. We have developed much better on remote meetings and And our IT department, Todd and Shari, have done a great job that will allow every committee in town to do their own remote meetings. There is a protocol out there and that'll really help out. The chair mentioned, we're up to 60 of COVID-19 positives in, in Wakefield. And I candidly, if you look at statistics, we have a ways to go. More people unfortunately will be diagnosed with this. March 27th, we recorded our first death. On March 30th, we arranged for the sheridan to house our first responders. Should they become compromised or exposed? I will tell you, we have already used that. And two of those tests have come back and thank God, our two police officers that were tested came back negative. The third one, I have not heard back, so, but I'm hopeful on that one as well. They're all on the same call. And I got to say, they were very grateful that we had that opportunity. They didn't have to go back to their families and expose them. And I'll tell you that the state called us today asking us how we set that up, because they haven't set up things that we have. Great job by our health agent and our emergency management director. On a bad April Fool's Day joke, farmland, we got a positive there. There's going to be more. We are currently working to prepare for the surge, if it does come, with Merrell's Wakefield Hospital and our health agent is working with that. Through all, and we also, I think the chair did not mention this, but we tried to find things for our community to do. Open the yardway site early to get people in there. And I think that's been a great success. Through it all, we have promoted social distancing. We've done that through meshes, messaging, videos, the flashing boards downside, public shaming. And I think 80% of those have been great about doing it. Others seem to either not believe that the guidelines apply to them. And I think these actions are beyond a lack of common sense, or in a certain sense are selfish, because we, we can't spend resources on people that are, that are bringing, to a certain extent, this on this, on, on themselves. So therefore tonight, I'm going to recommend to the council, and perhaps the state of the emergency would allow me to do this anyway, but the council is the, the in charge of the public ways. I believe we should limit parking along the lake and adjacent town lots. We will mark the side streets, resident parking only as well, because I don't want people to drive around the lake and say they can't park on Main Street and go up on White Ave and block that on both sides. And then we would have a trouble getting a, an ambulance up if we had to. My sense is that many people walk, flock to the lake from out of town for walks. And we end up in situations because of the width of the sidewalk, as the chairman mentioned, and, and our other pathways, that it's impossible to properly social distance. By limiting access, our numbers of walkers will decrease because they will, they can't park and, and walk there. I would note that I did hear from the vocational school superintendent today, and the DCR is going to block by the guard shack at, at Braycard to not allow people to park there as well. So we'll also have to be looking at Hemlock Road now and down towards the high school parking lot, limiting there. It, it's unfortunate that we have to take this route, so I will be looking for support on this and perhaps, and a vote from the board. And then I do have some other comments, Mr. Chairman. If you'd like to take that now for questions, you know, if it's up to you.
Totally. Why don't I do that then? I see the first hand raised was Councilor Chimes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mayo, for, for everything that you've been doing. I, you know, I agree with the, the concept of restricting parking by the lake and at Braycard. It certainly ties into what the, what the governor's doing, you know, as we look at state beaches and so forth. So I do think it makes sense, as unfortunately it needs to. Just a clarifying question, as we talk about signing around the lake for resident parking, some of the side streets, are you considering that as sort of a temporary measure or something more permanent? And, you know, if we are talking about something more permanent, you know, do you have thoughts on what that means from an enforcement perspective, you know, kind of post emergency?
Well, we do have, I mean, this, this is during the emergency, frankly. I, we do have two parking officers, enforcement officers, that really, there's not a big issue downtown anymore, so don't have to worry about that. So I would be using them to help enforce this. The real reason why I would post the streets along the lake, because I've kind of been here a while and, and I get what human nature will be. They'll see that we've blocked off those areas and then they'll go on some of those streets off the lake. On both sides are very narrow and people will park on both sides. And it will cause consternation with some of the neighbors, the residents there. Maybe they have kids home from school and so they have more cars there that would be in their spots, in quotation. I've heard of one community that had an issue similar to this. Ambulance couldn't, couldn't get through. And by the way, we want, we don't want, right now, a lot of people flocking here from out of town and, and clogging up the lake. So I'm going to try to hinder that as much as possible. I'm hoping this isn't long-term. I'm thinking this is very short-term during this next month or so, and then we would go back to normal.
All right. So we're talking temporary signage, not...
Temporary signage, talking paper signage, staple to trees and things.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chimes. Vice Chair Santos?
I totally support the parking ban along the lake, and I think even closing Vets Field in the gas and light, gas and light department, because they're going to flow there. My guess is if we, you know, asked for residency papers, a lot would not be Wakefield that are walking the lake. I think a lot of Wakefield folks are walking their neighborhoods. I've never seen people in my neighborhood that I've seen in the last few weeks, which is kind of lovely. You're seeing new faces, people are socially distancing. But I think enforcement has to be key. We either tow them or give them a ticket. That's, that's how they're going to learn. So you tow a few cars and people get a little bit nervous about parking there. Anne, we lost you for a bit.
She's unmuted, so I'm not sure.
Lost the video, I mean, audio.
Councilor Dinoco, did you have anything to add as well?
Until Anne gets back audio, I agree with the shutdown, but I just need the scope of an area from the town administrator so that I can fully understand what areas we're going to be shutting down. So I'm assuming that the Lowell Street across from Honeydew, you'll be shutting down that area. That's one of the areas. Main Street along the lake heading south to the downtown. The church area with the playground is that parking lot. Moving to the hall field for North Ave.
Yes.
Anne's recommendation was to incorporate the light department, which is a great one. I completely forgot that one. At the halls park is the parking area next to the cemetery. That's going to be closed as well.
I, I would, I would hit every area over there, yes. Every public area, and I will speak to the private owners as well.
Right, because it's Converse, and then you have the Niagara property.
Yes.
So those would be the only two that I would have concern over, because we have no jurisdiction over them. In regards to where people park.
And the, and the first parish parking lot.
Yes, that's correct. No, I, I agree with the shutdown. I do agree with giving the people of the surrounding streets, affording them the, the exclusion on being able to park out in the streets themselves and no one else. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments of the council? I know that Vice Chair Santos is going to be coming back on. I don't believe she's on just yet. And Mr. Mayo, the timeline for this to be, be occurring, then it would be...
I, I hope to stop this as quick as tomorrow.
Hi, I'm back on my phone. I have to do this all the time.
I think just, just one other piece to, along the lines of trying to make sure that we're doing all that we can to keep healthy and safe. And the town has put this out already, but there has really been a significant amount of rubber surgical gloves and masks, disposable masks that have been just littered around, not just the lake, but, but around the, almost every neighborhood you go into, you might be inclined to see a, you know, a surgical glove here or there. And it's so incredibly important when we're talking about stopping this, not just the six feet, it's not just washing your hands. It's also making sure that you're smart about what you're doing with those items. And it's, it's great that you're using them, but when you're done, please put them into a plastic bag and put them in a transfer receptacle. Treat them like you would any kind of other like biohazard or medical waste. The idea that there, especially on windy days, there, we have medical masks flying around neighborhoods and the side of the street. We can't have that and, and try to maintain the safe, healthy community that we're looking to maintain here. So I know that the, the town has already pushed this out on, on social media. Please, please be mindful of that. And please be responsible with, with what you're doing with those items when you're wearing them or using them. Any other further comments or questions? If not, I will enter, as Mr. Mayo said, as we had passed the, the emergency declaration, we did bestow Mr. Mayo with certain authorities to do things relative to the health and safety of the community. Since we're having this meeting tonight and since this involves a public way, it made sense for us to be able to, to vote on this after speaking with Mr. Mayo today about it, when he raised it as, as an issue that he felt pretty strong about that we should act on. So with that, I will entertain a motion limiting the parking along the lake and the adjacent town lots, as, as has been described in this discussion.
Still moved.
Second.
And moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Councilor Dinoco. Do I have any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote then. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Councilor Chimes?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Councilor Dinoco?
Yes.
And Councilor May?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski? Yes, so it's a seven to zero vote, Melon Clerk. Very unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your continued efforts and the entire team, Mr. Mayo. Again, it's, it's, I know it's been a team effort and you've done a great job of leading your personnel.
They're very, you should be very proud of your team, the, the town council. And town council's part of the team too. They are really special, special employees from, from top to bottom, side to side, and they really want to do the best for the town. Mr. Chairman, if I could have a couple more things I'd like to make the council aware of. I do believe that following the CDC guidelines, people should wear masks or bandanas or something in, in public, just whatever we can do to slow this down is, is very important. And I, that's a, that's a guidance that I think we should follow. A couple of things that are coming up at our next meeting. I will ask the council to cancel the Fourth of July parade and, and Fourth of July festivities for this year. I've been in contact with the Westside Social Club and the Wakefield Independence Day Committee. And of course, they are sad, but they, they both understand this issue. And I think as we come out of this, and hopefully we come out of it in May and June and we're fine, but I think to have another 50,000 people, you know, upon, you know, to come to town to Wakefield, it just does not seem prudent to me as we just came out of social distancing if there was a relapse. As importantly, we really don't have time to do the full planning for this event and the, and particularly the Westside Social Club, because the Wakefield Independence Day Committee seems to have funds in place for what was going to be admittedly be a little bit smaller parade this year anyway. But a lot of the fundraising has been canceled. And I know the Westside Social Club, it cost them $40,000 to run the children's events and the fireworks and what have you. And right now, in the state of the economy, with businesses struggling, people struggling, they are very hesitant to even ask for these types of donations. So the planning and the fundraising is a big thing. As we look towards next year's budget, we would save close to $50,000 in town funds for overtime, police, fire, and DPW. Nothing to sneeze at, as we're going to have to look at all of our budgets carefully. And probably nearest to my heart is that, I think as we come through this, our public safety, Board of Health, who has to check all of the things too, and DPW staff are and will be exhausted. And we have them almost all on for that day. Not having them to work that day and all night, because that doesn't, doesn't end until around 11 o'clock when people leave, would really give them a breather. And my, so I think that's important. My police chief, fire trees, fire chief, emergency manager, director, and the health agent all support this decision as well. So that's not up for vote tonight. I think we should let that permeate, but I think that maybe we should let the community know that that's on the, that's on the agenda. And I think unfortunately, that's something to do. And it's a sad day. And actually, Councilor Chimes reached out to me with a great idea, I thought, to have some, maybe sort of an online presence and some contests, and maybe we can pull some things together, some gift cards, your Fourth of July moment, and maybe some kids can do some stuff at home and what have. I think that's a great, a great way for us to light up the airwaves. So I'll be coming back on that. While we're going on, Blossoms has been canceled. I don't know if you knew that, that was beginning of May. And we're going to have to look at some of the other lake events as we go forward in May as well, whether or not they should be considered on, considered going. So we're bringing that to you. The next thing that we are doing, or I shouldn't say the next thing, one of the ongoing, is we are also looking and we're supplying nursing homes, our housing authority with supplies, masks and gloves and things like that to help them out. I am concerned about that very fragile population, and we're doing a great job there. And at our next meeting, we'll be able to address town meeting and some issues regarding tax billing, as the legislation regarding this was just signed on Friday. So we will be going through that with town council and seeing some votes that the council can take to make things a little bit better for the people and to probably also move town meeting. May 4th is what our date is, and we could move that out into the month of June as well when things have settled down. So that's all I have. I spoke too much, Mr. Chairman, but thank you very much for the time and thank you for the support.
Very important updates, Mr. Mayo, thank you for them. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for anything related to the COVID-19 updates? And just to piggyback off of what Mr. Mayo was saying, when we're talking about face coverings, we're not talking about those, the surgical or medical grade masks. We're just talking about things like bandanas, like things like this, that you'd have fabric. And I know Councilor Smith-Galvin is, is, has been doing a tremendous job of sewing. For those of us that aren't as, as inclined with the sewing machine, literally a bandana and a couple, I guess, hair ties or rubber bands will do the trick. But certainly, it's, it's good to see that kind of community outreach. I know Councilor Smith-Galvin has really been leading the charge in terms of the drop off of fabric, and that's, that's really resulted in a lot of masks that have been created for, for people around town and also for those health doctors. Thank you for that, certainly. It's, it makes a difference. And it was nice to see the community come together like that, certainly. Otherwise, we'll move on to the, the final agenda.
You have a couple of hands up, Mr. Chairman, I think.
Apologies. Councilor Chimes? Go ahead.
From you, darling. Sorry, I think I unmuted myself as you unmuted me, Mr. Chair. But thank you. Just a, a question, Mr. Mayo, and you know, this can be something maybe we can, you know, get the information offline or bring back to next week's meeting. But I'd love to get a sense at some point as to sort of the status of our town employees in terms of, you know, who's able to work remotely, you know, in terms of numbers and departments, you know, who's, who has to come in and physically be working. You know, are there folks that are not coming in because they're not essential but are, are not able to work from home? Just to get a sense as to sort of where the employee population sits, just so we as a council understand, you know, what we're doing to make sure that we're, we're keeping town employees safe to the greatest extent possible as well.
Absolutely, yep, easy. Councilor Smith-Galvin?
Um, just two quick questions. Steve, I know there's been some talk of National Grid and whether they're still working. I just wonder if there is an update on that.
As soon as they finish that Salem Street section where they, we went under the river there, they'll be, they'll be done. We're not letting them open up anything new.
Great, thank you very much.
They may be doing some work on their site there, but that's, yeah, that's good.
And, and this is probably a little too early, but I know we'll have things like the farmer's market contract coming up and the boat contract coming up. And I just, I think we probably should start to give some thought to. And I just, I think we probably should start to give some thought to, you know, whether that's gonna be business as normal or there's gonna be some special provisions we're gonna have to put in.
All of those things, yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you're doing and the whole town staff.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you know further questions, then no other hands up. The last item on the agenda is any matters not anticipated within the last 48 hours? Do we have any emergency matters that anyone needs to raise? If not, Counselor?
Thank you and your team for everything you're doing, including Ruth. Just in the Board of Health have been just doing an amazing job. I just wanted to put some stuff on people's radars, just to think about, one, and to tell folks about, so I know Melrose, Wakefield Healthcare has been a great partner during this and as always, and they had scheduled a briefing for us and town officials and counselors. And I was at the same time as this meeting and so they will be rescheduling it. They are also, I think, recording it and they'll share, and I just wanna share that with folks that they've just been such a great partner and appreciative of everything that everyone's been doing but working with Steve and Ruth and other people in town. So I just wanted to mention that. And then the other thing, just for us to think about is our emergency fund, which I'm so proud of and thank you so much, everyone who's donating to that. It's for individuals. And I know in this time, as we think about our local businesses that are being devastated, and we talked about some other programs. Boston just came out with a program for small business relief. And I just, you know, if we could maybe work with the chamber and think about, is there something that we do not for residents, but something for our businesses in town that are really, really suffering and I worry about building up our local economy? So I just saw Boston, Mayor Walsh just put it out today and I'll share that with you, Steve. But I think it's something for us just to think about is partnering with the chamber, partnering with the banks in town. Is there something we can do for the next couple of months to help our businesses? So I'd love to be part of those conversations going forward if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So if we don't have any matters not anticipated, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And I will just take a roll call for that as well.
Ed, still have their hands raised? I had my hand raised. Super briefly, because I got, I froze and I had to go back on my phone. I just want to, and someone might have brought this up already, but the, you know, the community boards and the public shaming, I'm hoping people are a little kinder as we move forward. You don't know why someone may be out. You don't know why someone may be in what appears to be a group but is spreading out. There may be very good reasons for that. So I think people, I'm not on any of the Wakefield community groups. I refuse to be because I find them a bit poisonous. But I've heard that people are just being a bit nasty. So I would hope our town would not be that way. And not as an emergency, Steve, but I wanna just thank you, thank the Board of Health and everyone. We're doing an amazing job and the people that are working 24/7, I'm sure are exhausted, but they're still doing yeoman's work for the safety of us. So thank you all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. Counselor Dinoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quickly, right now, I've been working with the businesses and trying to get them as much information regarding the CARES Act. I've actually developed a group and added to my counselors page, giving them as much information about the programs that are out there, what particular applications they can fill out in order to try to obtain funds. So there's a lot of information that's out there right now for them. If there's any businesses that aren't part of the group, all they have to do is message me and I'll add them so they have access to it. I know four of our own banks that are currently accepting applications from anyone without having to have an account. So that's a good thing in its own right because there's been a lot of confusion on that. There's a couple of banks that still aren't ready to do the applications. So we just have to wait for them. Address what Counselor Butt had to say. Patronicity had reached out to me in an email to inform me of a possible crowdfunding opportunity that would work to benefit all businesses in the town. So I'm looking to gather enough information from them in order to move forward with a possible idea on that end. So if they can come in and give us any type of information on how we can work to have that happen in Wakefield, base it on best practices on other communities, I think we should welcome it in any way that we can. So that's a couple of things that have been going on on my end as far as the business community. I just want to let people know what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Dinoco. Anyone else? No. All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Still moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco, assuming no discussion. All right. All those in favor, Vice Chair Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Aye.
Counselor May?
Aye.
Counselor Dinoco?
Aye.
Chairman Donbrowski. So with that, I will call this meeting adjourned at 6:57. Our next regular Town Council meeting is next Monday, April 13th at 7:00 PM. Again, it'll be via Zoom and anyone interested in participating from the public can participate in the same way. You can either join this meeting live by audio, video, or both. Or you could submit any comments you may have through our portal on our town website or drop them off in writing at least two hours before the meeting outside of Town Hall. So with that, I thank everyone for participating. I think we did well for our first Zoom together team. And I wish everyone a good night and be well with, thanks.
You as well.
You too. Good night.
Night. Thank you.